It's definitely the, I think it's the right place. We'll see.
Hi Peter.
There are only three properties listed as belonging to him. And one is the other case that we had and the other I'm not sure about.
Yeah. Hey Judy, you want to do me a favor?
What's that?
If you start screen sharing, Connor tends to come late and I try to just notate what time. So if you see it, can you just make a note and let me know?
If I see what?
Connor arrived.
Oh, well, that wouldn't be screen sharing. That would be looking in the gallery view.
I know, but when you screen share, I can't do anything.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Oh, I just if you acknowledge like a time he comes because I just tried to put on the minutes like arrived, you know, blah, 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 like if it's not on time.
Yeah.
So between you and I putting our heads together, I thought maybe, yeah, because I've been emailing him and being like, what time did you come?
So you have, you have no way of seeing anybody else if you're looking at my screen share?
I can't do anything.
Oh, I'm surprised. I thought you could split the screen.
No, no such luck. But you know what? We don't worry about it. He's here. Thank you.
Good.
I think I need to change my name on here.
I was gonna say, are you visiting Ellie or what?
Yeah.
I mean, my memory for faces is famously bad, but I thought you were Max and not Ellie.
No, but I have a computer, the internal mouse that has not worked for several weeks and I'm just impossible.
Well, Melissa or Ashley could change it. I can't because I'm not a host. But they could change it for you.
Working on it.
Click on the upper right-hand corner.
There you go. I got it. I got it. Look.
Hey, yeah. Good job.
And I got my mouse to work momentarily.
We make a great team.
I need to review it with you at some point. What's closed and done because I've got lots of stuff on my, not just on the map, but in my hard drive now that I'm downloading all of those attachments.
Right, of course. Probably next week would be a better time.
It's fine.
Because I don't, I think I'm only going to be in the office a few hours tomorrow.
I could probably do a screenshot of what I've got and then you can send it back to me.
Did that last time. That worked.
An easy thing to do and it, you know, it's really quick.
Yep. That makes sense.
Myself. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Hey Peter.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Okay, it is 6:30 and I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for October 21st, 2021. Do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
I do not.
We do have a quorum. So the minutes, if everybody is okay with the minutes, I'd like to see if we could accept them as is.
Throw them out.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Communications and announcements. We have an email from Laura Ricky regarding the scenic overlay discussion on the October 7th meeting. And the upcoming meeting on December 16th is when we will discuss the issues in the scenic overlay. We have an email from Mr. Vitu from the tree committee requesting a site visit to the Deswan Aaron site. We have a year-end report from Ken Panza regarding the aquifer protection working group and that was received October 12th. We have the also coming planning board response to the referral for fam acres. And I hope you've all read it. Judy has done some work on it. They have suggested that we need some further review in regards to the environmental sensitivity of the site and also they have some issues with the entrance.
I'm gonna just interrupt you real quick. We have them scheduled for the next meeting, November 4th and Matt Rudikoff is gonna present his memo to us too. So we'll be seeing them next meeting.
Okay, great. Judy's put together a very nice map, really showing the conditions on that overall site. So we will be reviewing that at that meeting.
I had a conversation, Peter, with Gretchen Stevens about what kinds of issues get contributed to core habitat. And she and I were both sort of puzzled at that circle where the core habitat is just kind of cut out in the middle. It's like if there was a building there, they might have done that, but I can't see a building on the, on the overhead photograph. So I don't know.
Yeah, it is strange. Sometimes you get those circles when they, when they locate a environmental issue or an animal issue, like a, like a.
Yeah, but that should, that should enhance the fact that it's core habitat, not put it out. So I don't know.
All right, we'll get to it. So then we have the 2021 Ashokan watershed Municipal Officials Day, which.
All right, I can, I can take that over to you, Peter. So I went to this.
You did? Oh, great.
Guys. And my game plan is as soon as I can fit it into the schedule, I'm going to give you guys the overview and I will give you some continuing ad credit. It was basically all on the project in Phoenicia for flooding and sediment and stream, but you guys can look forward to that in the upcoming meetings.
Good, good. Okay. We have an email from Mr. Benedict, which regarding the 22 Rock City Road. I think his main issue was sound imitating from the outdoor activities. We have email and letters from Mr. P. Jackson regarding the Woodstock Library moving to Dixon Avenue, his concern with traffic. But I'm not sure that the planning board will actually get to review the library case, but we'll see.
I recommended that he send that letter to Supervisor McKenna and the town board.
Okay, good, good. Then we have an email and web links from Mr. Vitu from the tree committee regarding the Deswan Aaron's, which we received October 19th. We have the proposal and letter sent to Supervisor McKenna for training for the RGIS, which is what Judy is working on. And we have an email and documents from Mr. Benedict regarding the Ray Cliff case, which is coming up. Or it's actually the Cooligan subdivision case coming up before us. So we'll get to that when we get there. It is 6:35. We have before us public hearing, application review and a sketch plan review. So the public hearing for 6:35 is Nicole Cooligan, planning board case 20-1224. This is a virtual public hearing of a subdivision application of a 68, 68.53 acre lot into two parcels of plus or minus six acres and plus or minus 62.5 acres in the R5 zoning district located at 404 Ray Cliff Drive in Woodstock and is represented by Mettenbach and Eggers. So I'll make a, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay. So would the representatives like to present to the board and the public what they're proposing?
Hi, it's the same application that we've had before you where Mr. Collagian would like to reestablish the two lots that he had prior. Apparently they got merged together as part of a tax issue, but it was never done as a planning board action. So here we are today trying to reestablish those lots. And in reference to all of the dialogue that came to light within the past couple of days with the HOA and, and the lawyers, I just want to say that is completely outside of our realm of expertise and we're letting the lawyers figure out the discord with the HOA. There's really nothing new for me to present here at this time.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public have something to say on this particular case?
Yeah, this is Michael Swartman. I have an adjacent property. And as it's unclear to me from the materials that were sent, what lots we're talking about and the, as I understand it, there were two lots within the Ray Cliff development that one was approximate immediately adjacent to the lot where my home is. And then there was a lot that was at, what is that now, 404 Ray Cliff Drive? And there was an adjacent property that was not part of the homeowners association that runs along the side of those two lots that I described as well as my lot. And that is not part of the Ray Cliff homeowners association. And it's, as I said, it's unclear to me which lots we're talking about. And to the extent that there's going to be a subdivision of very property, I think it would solely relate to the properties within the homeowners association as opposed to merging or subdividing a lot that was never part of the homeowners association. The, one of the issues is access to the lot that was never part of the homeowners association, homeowners association, given that Ray Cliff Drive and Hidden Valley Trail are private roads. As I understand it, access to that lot that was purchased, but was not part of the homeowners association, that access to that lot would not be allowed because it's a private road. So it appears to me that the lots that were, that are being discussed to be subdivided are the, are the three lots in the aggregate as opposed to the two lots that are in the homeowners association. So I, based upon the maps that were provided, it's impossible for me to determine which lots we're talking about. It looks like there was a separate conveyance of properties in 1997. That, and those are the adjacent properties. Those were marked on one of the surveys and it looks that the lots, the aggregate acreage that we're talking about includes all three lots. And the subdivision would appear to not make any sense to me because it includes lots that are in the homeowners association development and not.
Okay, is, is Mr. Benedict here in the audience tonight?
She wasn't able to make it tonight.
Right, wait.
So the only real rep that we have is Heather, I think, from what I see.
All right. Well, here's the situation. The planning board cannot resolve civil disputes. So we're going to recess this public hearing to the call of the chair until the access has been resolved. Thank you all much on that one. Okay. Yep, thank you. The next case we have before us is a wetlands and water course permit application review. And this is Michael Einstein, Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course Permit Case 21-044. And it's a review of the Wetlands and Water Course Permit Application for Development Within the Water Course Buffer Area. And HR, and HR zoning district located at 3 Kalamar Lane in Woodstock. And Brad Will of Ashokan Architecture is the rep. And if he's here, would he like to tell the board and the public what he has in mind?
Thank you, Peter. And good evening, everyone. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I was, we were before the board, I think it was early in September. Melissa, you probably have the date. And I presented the application and the proposal to the board. I submitted a fairly detailed set of drawings that include, it's a bit of a mix of what is proposed more immediately, which is a, an accessory apartment cottage reconstruction of a, of a demolished cottage cabin that was pretty much in, 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 in bad disrepair. That cottage or cabin hung out over the, the bank of the Tannery Brook on the north side of the Tannery Brook across the, the stream is, is the beginning of the Como Reserve, Preserve. So Mr. Einstein is interested in, in rebuilding this cottage. It is in the AE zone. Flood plain as is much of the, the village of Woodstock. We are going to build it, you know, in accordance with flood plain mitigation standards, the height of the, the finished floor, the materials, flood vents. I reviewed all that last time. In addition to this initial building, a future phase building, the site plan that was presented reflected kind of phased approach with some construction activity in that, that flood plain and others, others outside of it. You know, originally, as, as the board knows, there were several houses there that had been destroyed by fire. So this is a kind of a reconstruction project that's going to be phased in over time. Mr. Einstein would also like to see and is requesting activity in the, the flood plain to cross with these narrow foot bridges to gain access to the, the southern part of his property, which, you know, has a fair amount of land on a sloping bank on the south side of the Tannery Brook. They would be very, you know, conservatively built, you know, not, not large, not long, just enough to, to span the, the brook. They've been engineered so they would, you know, be strong and also comply with the base flood elevation and flood levels such as if the Tannery Brook ever took on the waters from a 500-year flood. The footbridge itself, the suspension footbridge would likely survive that. It's built high enough to, to bridge the, the brooks. So he'd like to put two of those on, one at each of the, two out of the three properties that share frontage, or not frontage, but through which the Tannery Brook flows. And that's kind of the, the summary of it. And if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
Planning board members have questions?
I remember this case. Do you want the map up?
If you're asking me, sure.
We did review it and the site plan seemed to be quite in order. What we are here for actually is a wetlands and water course permit for a very small area, I believe, Brad, that is in the buffer of the creek. Is that true?
Yeah, it's, it's a stripe that goes across, cuts across going from, you know, the flow of the, the brook from west to east. So there is a, you know, a small section of floodway that runs between the proposed cottage or accessory apartment reconstruction and a future cottage as well on a neighboring property. But yes, that's, that's the idea is that the, we're, it's, it's only part of the, the three parcels that it runs through.
So Brad, how many square feet more or less is in the actual stream buffer?
Hold on. I'm sure I have that figure somewhere. There's a lot of data here, sorry.
And it's true that there was an existing building in the same spot, in the same buffer before, correct?
Yes, yeah, we have lots of photographic documentation of that and that, that structure had overhung the, the, the banks and had a, a single, you know, metal post that dropped down literally into the creek. And what we're doing here, as this drawing show, are, are bringing back that, that most forward structure so that it's not, not, not as close as the previous, you know, now demolished structure was.
Hey Brad, I think, Brad, I think you're right that it was early September, September 6th. But if I look at the EAF form, I believe physically disturbed is only .03. Does that sound accurate?
I think that sounds accurate. Yes, yep.
Were there drawings in the application that I could bring up?
Oh my gosh, there's, there's 20, there's 17 sheets.
Which document is it in?
The plant, the site, the site plans are like, excuse me? Okay, yeah. So if you go to number, sheet number three, I think is the one you, you want to look at.
Peter, if I may, it's Brian. Are the bridges under our purview or no?
Um. I don't know why it's doing this.
The, it's a good point. Technically, I would imagine the footings are in the buffer. But there are many bridges, foot bridges across creeks here. And I believe if it's done correctly, it's permitted. If it's engineered so that the, so that the bridge doesn't wash down the creek.
Is that the building department first, then us, or?
It's the building department in the sense that they are the Wetlands and Water Course Inspector. So it's, go ahead.
To, to help, this, a majority of this project is within the buildings, building department. We, we won't see Brad back for this. This is the only little, the only piece they need is a wetlands and water course permit for that little strip section that they're going to go through the buffers.
The sound lights and it keeps crashing. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
So basically, we're gonna set a public hearing because we have to, I mean, it's so small, I'd almost say, you know, we could could do without it, but because it's wetlands, we won't. So we should set a public hearing so that the planning board can make some decisions and regarding the Wetlands and Water Course Permit, we have to do a couple of findings in the, in the decision-making process. But it does seem to me this is relatively small and was there before. So.
Peter, if I, if I may. So of course, the, the bridges are, 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 you know, the pedestrian suspension bridges are new. They weren't there before, of course. The only thing that was really there was the, the cabin, the demolished cabin was up front. And then behind that, there was the building that had been ravaged by fire. It was completely totaled. That's all, everything's been torn down on this site. Everything has been demolished and cleaned up. But I will note that what's shown on this site plan on the third sheet, I don't know if you're, you know.
Oh, I'm having, I'm having trouble with, with, with my software for the last week and it doesn't open your, it doesn't want to open your PDF.
That's okay. You can refer to this later. I'm just describing what's on the site plan. It's pretty clearly shown. It shows a future phase primary residence on the largest of the three properties, the one that's about an acre in size. And that's a 3,000 plus or minus proposed square foot, two-story building. Most, the majority of that, along with a deck, are shown, is shown within the, the base flood elevation. So similar, and then also a, an accessory, a future-based accessory building is shown at the other small lot. So a total of three structures, dwelling units type structures have some or all of their, almost all of their floor plans, their, their footprints within that base flood elevation. Now that, that's to say that when, when they get constructed over time, they will be built to in complete compliance with flood plain construction method, methodology. So I just wanted to note that it's, it's not just the, the reconstruction. It's, that's why the whole phased three parcel site is presented to you for the Wetlands and Water Course.
Right.
I have an idea. Peter, do you, do you want, do you guys want to do a site visit and then we can bring it back as do the mitigation? Then some, then you guys have like a clear picture of what we're looking at?
Uh huh. So, yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
That's just, just my thought. I mean, we can just schedule a public hearing, but I know you guys need to mitigate and look at the questions that we need for the Wetlands and Water Course Permit. And it is a small area. But if you feel that, you know, it would be beneficial for the planning board to go on a site visit, we can, we could definitely arrange that.
Yes, I think it's worth it. You know, at the last meeting when Brad presented this, I think we all agreed that it's a really nice project in a place that got decimated by fire and it's a mess. And it's a nice project to provide living quarters. And so I think it's a real benefit to the town to have this site improved. But I agree with Melissa. Let's do a quick site visit and then after that, we'll schedule the public hearing.
You can see the house.
That's a great idea.
You can see the old cabin.
Yeah.
And it's literally across the stream.
We can, we can do the Wetlands and Water Course with a clear picture in our heads of what we need to do for the paperwork for the permit.
Yeah, and I'd be, and I'd be happy to be there for, as part of that. So you just let me know.
Okay. All right. Any other members of the board have questions for Brad regarding this? I mean, we went over it the last time, but.
Volunteer for reps?
Yes, we need two reps to go. I see James got his hand up. Thanks, James. Anybody else want to take a quick, it's easy to get to. It's right in town.
There is.
There I'll go.
You don't have to go up any mountains. You're gonna go, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, great, great.
I'll get the mail out and we'll find, figure out a date and we'll get that and then we'll get back to the paperwork stuff and then schedule the public hearing, Brad.
Great, great. Okay, thanks Brad. Thank you so much. And we'll get back to you.
Great.
Okay, under sketch plan review, we have Michael Stock, Jr. and Clint M. Stock, planning board case 21-1080G. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application of a 34.28 acre lot into two parcels of 27.9 acres and 6.3 acres in the R5 zoning district located at 3537 Valley View Way in Lake Hill. And the rep, I believe, is Michael Stock and Kenneth Key. So if you guys are here, you want to please tell the board what you have in mind.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I'm Mike Stock, as you know, and Kenny's right here.
I'm the surveyor, Ken Key.
Surveyor of record. It's a pretty minor subdivision to the remainder of the land. As we were discussing a few minutes earlier, they proposed to change the southern line more towards the westerly side, a little wider. It'll come to about seven acres with that lot line change, which will be on the final map. In addition to that, I spoke with the superintendent of highways about a curb cut. There's an existing logging road which we want to utilize for installation of the driveway. He said he had no problems with it. He loads the site. He looked at the, the road proposed and he said it's a good area to come in from for site, visual effect as well as the site distance. The engineer of record for the septic system is going to be Christopher DeChero out of Soberies, New York. He's, I think the planning boards may be familiar with his work. If not, I know the building department has been. With reference to the points and the survey, I'd like to turn it over to Ken to describe what the proposed lot is going to look like.
Is this the right lot?
No, that is, this is not the right picture.
Oh, well.
Yeah, you have something up that's not correct.
Mike, if you just, you're gonna want to fill out a curb cut with the building department also. And then that way like Ellen and Boney both go and just write up a paper and kind of get that back to me. So just make sure you do that.
Okay.
I don't understand that because that's what it says it is.
But I need the paper and Ellen will need it too.
It's okay.
I'll see if I can open your plan, but I'm really having trouble with software lately.
Okay.
All right, well, we need to make a site visit. All right, well, um, we need to make a site visit. Uh, so I'll volunteer for that. Um, I have seen the plans. If we can't get them up now, we will. Make sure we have the plans up after the site visit, so we can uh, discuss it then. So uh, I'll go ahead and do a site visit. Um. And uh, I guess, Michael, if you want to uh, meet me there, we'll set up.
Yeah, if you can tell me when you can do it, Peter, I appreciate it. And because it's easier for me to meet you than anybody else. They all have jobs. I'm retired, so I can meet you anytime's convenient for you.
Okay, um. Just make sure you give your, I have your phone number, but your cell number something to Melissa, so I can give you a call afterwards.
Right. Melissa, you've got it, right?
I think so. If not, I'll email you tonight that I need it.
Okay.
All right. All right, Mike. So uh, we'll do a site visit and then we'll get you back before us and go, and hopefully we'll be able to get the plans up then and show the board exactly what.
You know, my information is that this is thirty. What is it? Thirty-five and thirty-seven Valley View Way and it's the SBL. According to my data, that's the plot place. So I don't understand it.
Well, pull it back up one more time if you would.
See, there's Valley View.
Right.
And this property. Shows up as fifteen thirty-five, fifteen three five thirteen four ten.
Okay, it is, it's the right, you're right. It is the correct parcel.
It just looks weird with the topos.
Well, I've got the wetlands, the wetlands buffers are lit up. And the driveway is considered a road for some reason. So that's.
Yeah, it's an old logging road. You know, we, we travel over it, you know, to, to get around the property, but it's, it's simply to utilize that and. Cut any more trees and make it any wider.
Sure. Well, it shows up on the Ulster Streets clip for some reason, but it says driveway.
All right. Anybody, anybody else on the board have any questions for Mike regarding this application?
Do not.
If not, uh, okay, we'll set up a site visit and, and get this moving along.
It's not in the scenic overlay for those who want to know.
It's not.
Nope.
Not in the scenic.
Right next to it, but it's not in it.
Yeah, it's just below it. And actually, it's an R three, but that, that, that matters because we're going bigger.
Pretty steep, pretty steep.
It is R five.
Behind it is.
Behind it's R five.
Behind the property is pretty steep.
Yeah.
Well, these, these are contour, these are twenty-foot contour lines. So even there. But you know, you're, you're working with it. You've got buildings in an area that looks relatively flat.
Yeah, it is.
You know the property, so.
Yeah, and when Peter sees it, he can report back. Are, are you going to schedule a, a, a hearing date again now or after the site visit?
After the site visit, we'll set up a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, just, just to go, I'm not sure exactly when we'll get there, but um.
Okay, all right.
We'll do it pretty quick.
Look forward to meeting you after. And thank you, everybody.
Okay, Michael, thank you.
You don't need a surveyor after, do you?
No.
Okay. We now have another sketch plan review. It's forty-three forty-five Mill Hill Road LLC. Special use permit twenty-one dash zero three six two B. And this is a sketch plan review of a site plan review application. For site plan modification to an existing site plan in the HC zoning district. Located at forty-three forty-five Mill Hill Road. And the rep is Nicholas Volenger. Is he here? Nicholas?
Hi, hello.
Okay, why don't you please tell the planning board what you have in mind, want to do?
Okay, excellent. Um, so when the coronavirus uh, hit. And uh, Mr. McKenna allowed like us to have some changes, make some changes, so we could try to accommodate outdoor diners. Um, we had two roofs, like enclosures. They're open, but there's a rooftop. Um, built to put like customers inside of them. Um, so that they could just have a rooftop over their head. And uh.
You're breaking up. Yeah, I'm not hearing you too well.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now I can.
Thought it was me for a second.
So we have these two like, uh, kind of, I call them cabins, but they're two. Structures in the back with A-frame roofs on them. And um, I'm here asking for a um, site plan modification to include those. In our, in our site plan.
Okay, I've seen the site plan and I saw the review that was. Sent to us by the building department. So obviously it's meets the codes. Um, so again, if we could get a couple of volunteers to uh, make a quick site visit. And then we can get you back on the agenda to. To um, finish this up. It seems pretty reasonable. I don't.
It's certainly terrible, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh huh. It's in the way in the back against. In other words, it's a very back part of the property where these two uh, little structures are. Um, so uh, I, I checked with the building department to make sure there was no issue with setbacks. So it's just a question of doing a quick site plan.
Sure, I'll go.
Visit. We got, uh, James, okay? It's pretty simple, so we. All right. Okay, guys.
I've got John's hand up too, but he's muted.
And John's got his hand up. John?
You gotta unmute yourself, Tom.
Thank you.
Bye, John. Do you want to go on the site visit?
It's right there in town. Sure.
Yeah, all right, cool.
All right, great. Um, I, I guess you guys have to coordinate, coordinate it with each other or since it's right in town, you can probably just stop by anytime. As long as it's open.
I'm there all the, I'm here seven days a week. Just let me know when it's convenient for you gentlemen and I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, all right.
I'll work on coordinating and be in touch next.
There.
We lost him again.
Okay, so. What we have now is a presentation of a draft justification for possible Xena Woods. Critical environmental area. And uh, I believe we have someone here that's going to present this to the board. Is there anybody going to present this uh, this uh, presentation to the board?
Do you want Gretchen, right?
Yeah.
Alex, Alex is on and Julia is on. I'm not sure if one of them, they're W E C. One of them, Gretchen Stevens, maybe also.
No, I don't see her here.
I see, she's there, Judith. She's, she's.
Oh, she's on a different window. Yeah, she's on a different window and she's.
I can tell her. Her. Maybe she's not. Oh, there she is. She's unmuting.
It's a bigger meeting than my screen will show.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I am here. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I actually uh, did not know that I would be the presenter tonight, but I'm, I'm happy to tell you. Uh, uh, a, a little about this. Uh, this is a project. Um. It's been undertaken by a uh, group of uh, Woodstock people, including members of the. Planning board, uh, the W E C, uh, uh, and other uh, people involved in, in town matters. Um. And uh, it's being um, uh, the, the group is being assisted by the Hudson River Estuary Program of the D E C. And Hudsonia. Uh, I am a biologist with Hudsonia. Um, and uh, uh, first of all, I'll just uh. Explain what a critical environmental area is. You do have um, one of these. No, you, you, you do have a critical environmental area in Woodstock. It's, it's drawn around a particular wetlands. But this is a uh, a different kind. Um, a critical environmental area is an area that is um. Uh, has been identified as being um. Uh. Um. Uh, exceptional uh, in terms of its uh, environmental uh, uh, characteristics. Uh, or it's uh, or in some cases, it could be identified because it uh, presents some uh, hazards to the human community. Um, uh, the designation of a C E A is uh. Is actually a designation that ultimately uh, would be made by the town board in an official way. And um, but the uh, the C E A group working in Woodstock is uh, would, would like to. Um, have the planning board informed about this. And uh, and if possible, to get the planning board's endorsement of the idea before the idea is brought formally to the town board. Um, Judy has just put up this map uh, showing the proposed Xena Woods uh, critical environmental area. As, as the group is calling it. It's the area here uh, shown in the uh, the sort of blue-green stipple. Uh, this is in the far southeastern corner of the town. Um. The uh, the sort of maroon uh, stippled areas are area, are parcels that are under some kind of formal protection already. Um, uh, including the Bluestone Wild Forest and the areas around the uh, Kingston Reservoirs. The um, once a critical environmental area uh, has been established and adopted by the town and uh, and registered with the state. It is um. Uh, uh, he, here's what would happen and here's what, how it would be meaningful to the, to the planning board. Um, the, the C E A designation does not actually impose any restrictions on this land. Um, but uh, when there are new uh, actions uh, occurring within the C E A area. Um, the uh, the planning board, a, a, actions related to, to land use, actions that might um. Uh, have some effect on the uh, important characteristics of this area. The planning board um, would be required to. Um, uh, make a written uh, statement uh, about uh, what they considered and, and how those considerations. Um, uh, contributed to their final decision about this um, this project. And it wouldn't be just. The planning board, if the town board is considering new um. Legislation, say, that affects this part of the town. Uh, the uh, the town board would need to consider the, the special attributes of the C E A. Um, uh, uh, and, and make a uh, a written justification of their decision. Um, so why was this area chosen as a C E A? Um. Judy, could you bring up, you, you just had the justification document.
No, and everybody got a copy of that two weeks ago.
Um, my, my situation is that I don't have a copy in front of me. And so I would just like to uh, make sure I'm not going to miss something here. Um, yes, so uh, going, uh, going down, you can go down a little further. Uh, a little further, yes, to significance. Um. There are a, a number of characteristics within the C E A that are of special concern. Um. Uh, one um, is that the uh, there is a significant aquifer that underlies this area. Um, uh, and aquifers can be very much affected by activities that are uh, uh, happening on the, on the ground surface. Uh, there is also the uh, the Sawkill uh, runs through this area and there are numerous smaller streams that run, run into the Sawkill. Um, and some streams that run actually into uh, uh, another watershed. Can you move down a little bit, Judy? Um, the um, the C E A includes a very large forested area. That is uh, adjacent to forested areas that lap over uh, into um, into the town of Ulster and uh, and uh, up into Sawgerties. This is uh, one of the largest lowland forest areas um, in, in this part of the county. Uh, forests can be very important areas for uh, storing carbon, both in the above-ground biomass and the below-ground biomass and in the soils. Um, forests, of course, are also very important as uh, as sort of tree uh. Uh, filters and, and, and treatment of air pollution. And they help to cool uh, local air temperatures, which can be. A tremendous service for people living in or, or near forests. This area also has various uh, scenic views of uh, of the Sawkill and the distant Catskills. Um, and can you move down a, a little bit, Judy? Um, the habitats, as I mentioned, large forests are, have special uh, value for certain kinds of wildlife that need. Large forested areas to sustain local populations. Large forests can also be important movement corridors. And this is one of the very large uh, south to north habitat. Carriers in this part of the county uh, in lowland areas. There, there are plenty of these corridors up in the hills of Woodstock and, and uh, adjacent towns. Um, but this is part of the lowland habitat corridor, which uh, fills in an important gap for local um, biodiversity, especially in response to. The warming climate when we uh, uh, are seeing uh, and, and expect to continue that. A lot of um, uh, animals and plants actually will need to move to northern latitudes or to, or to higher elevations. To, in response to the warming climate. Um. There are uh, how many was it? At least twenty vernal pools have been identified in this uh, C E A area. Uh, vernal pools are these uh, special isolated, small wetland habitats that are, are. Uh, they are the critical uh, breeding habitat for a special group of amphibians. On two species of which are uh, have been ranked as um, New York State Species of Greatest Conservation Need. These amphibians need both the pools for a breeding period and nursery period in the spring and early summer, but they. Uh, also need uh, large areas of forest around the pools. So both the pools. And the forests are the critical uh, habitats for these, this special group of amphibians. Um. This area does include a um. A segment of the Sawkill, um, and uh, much of which is forested uh, along the, the edges. Um, forests are very important to maintaining the habitat conditions and the. Water quality of uh, of streams and, and certainly of the Sawkill. There are many smaller streams uh, that the, the forests of the Xena Woods C E A also help to protect. Um, a, a part of the, of the uh, this critical environmental area has been identified as important as for a summer roosting. Uh, area for bats. And as many of you probably know, uh, many of our bat species in. In New York are, have been uh, decimated by a disease, the, the white nose syndrome. Um, so whatever we can do to maintain their summer habitats to, to relieve their, their stress, at least during the summer. When they're not in their winter caves, um, will help to um, preserve the uh, populations of those bat species. And there has been a rare uh, damselfly identified in the Bluestone Wild Forest. Um, so uh, a. Attention to the habitats of the C E A will um. Uh, will help to uh, protect the um, the rare damselfly. So I think that's. Much of what I need to, to say as uh, to uh, introduce the idea of the C E A. And um, there are other, there are members of the uh, of the C E A, the Woodstock team working on this project that are uh, here. Um, at this meeting, including uh, Judy. And um. So if, if uh, you all uh, have any questions about this or how it would uh, affect the work that the planning board does. Um. Um, um, please uh, ask away and, and one or the other of us can probably answer them.
All right, I guess my first question is what's the, what's the next procedure? Is there a public outreach or is there a um? What, what's the next step to get it, to get it finalized?
Yeah, the um, so the, the, the group has put together, I think is still working a, a little bit on the um. The justification document. That's what Judy was just scrolling through. Um. Uh, that will be um, uh. That will be sort of broadcast to the public through various means and, including the town website. The, the CEA team will present this idea to the town board in, I'm forgetting, but probably someone here remembers when that was scheduled for. The town board, if they want to move ahead with this, they will hold a public hearing. That's a required part of the procedure. After the public hearing, the town board will decide if they actually want to, if they want to revise the CEA in any way, or if they want to adopt it as is. If they decide to adopt it, they can do that by resolution. At that point, they will, they will send it on to be registered with the state, with the DEC. And once the DEC has registered it, the town board will need to notify all the other local and, and county and regional agencies that, that this CEA might affect, simply to inform them about it, about its purpose. And, and that's the end of the procedure. And then it is in place.
Okay. Does any board members have questions or a question or any other members of their team regarding this issue? John?
What is the current ownership of these parcels?
The, many of the parcels are in private ownership, I believe, maybe all of them, except the ones that were shown in the sort of maroon stipple in the, in the map that, that Judy put up. And yeah, if you want to put that up again. But I believe all the rest are in private ownership.
We can certainly identify who owns things. This map, although it has the parcels on them, it's such, it's such a light color that you really can't see them very well. But if, if Gretchen sends me this shape file, I can very easily identify who the owners are. I mean, I could do it myself, but it would be easier if I just had what he's already done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Has there been any, has there been any outreach to the private owners?
As far as I know, there's been no specific outreach to them, but they will be part of the, the outreach that's going to the whole town about this project.
I believe the hunting club that we recently dealt with on a, on a timber harvest is in that property.
Yes.
Peter, it's Brian.
Hi, Brian.
How do we go about having a discussion within the planning board to determine whether we want to endorse this or not? And then how should the timing be on that? I'm guessing Gretchen and the folks that have done excellent work on this, they'd like that sooner than later as they go through the process. But I'm also guessing that some may want the process to move a little further along before we make that decision. But I could be wrong.
Good point. Melissa, maybe we should find time coming up in one of our meetings to give this, this subject to the board to go over.
That's why, that's why I sent the document out. And if you don't have it, I can send it again, or Melissa can send it again. I think reading it carefully, I think Gretchen has done a wonderful job of the wording of this. And, you know, to stress that what it, I think its role for the planning board, even if it did not get, well, it won't happen if the town board doesn't endorse it, but that doesn't make it law. If the town board endorses it, it becomes registered with the state, it's still not binding its guidance.
Right. Judy, my question is, I, I'm, my assumption right now is that it's premature for us as the planning board to meet about this and discuss it. I mean, it's great that we know and that we have the information. Until you guys meet with the town board and feel how they're, and see how they're feeling it out, does that make sense to you?
Melissa? Hi, it's Alex.
Hi, Alex.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm, I'm great. Thank you. And I'm so glad you guys are talking about this tonight. You know, this is kind of the middle to end point of a, of a pretty long project that's been going on. I think we all had that workshop meeting back in April and we've been talking about this. November 9th is going to be Gretchen's presentation to the town board. So if that's helpful for you to know for your scheduling.
Alex, does it make sense what I said? Like, you can let me know maybe how that went at the town board and then I can work it in after that?
Um, I think if it makes sense, if it makes sense to you guys, you know, I don't want to tell you at the town board, at the planning board, how you, how you run things here.
I appreciate your input, Alex.
Certainly. Um, so, so, you know, just so, I think everyone here maybe, I don't know if we did a very good backstory. I'll do it very quickly, but obviously we had this workshop meeting. Peter had asked us as the WEC to come on board to help facilitate finding some more tools that you guys at the planning board can use. And we were very lucky. We applied and received this training from Hudsonia, which is why Gretchen is here tonight. So we've been working with them to identify this area and really as something that was at the behest of Peter and at the, at the planning board. So there is some idea that we would love to have that support going into speaking to the town board about it. Obviously, if it's something that you're not ready to discuss with them, we can also push that a little bit. I think we would be a little more comfortable knowing that, that the support of the full group was in place.
Okay. I can, I can definitely get it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Since what you just said, I'll, we'll put it on the next agenda for a conversation and we'll come up with something for you to go to the town board with the next few days after. How's that sound?
I think that sounds really good. Thank you.
Can I suggest?
That's a very good idea. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, we want them, we don't want to stall them. So we, we want to get it done so they can do it on November 7th.
We, the planning board, are so grateful for all the work that you've done with us and now on your own and with Gretchen for the CEAs. We know we kind of, we kind of started this, Peter, and us. So thank you. And we are so appreciative of everything that you've done.
If I could...
Does any board members have any questions? What, go ahead?
If I can suggest that people look at the document and like note what your questions are on it, then we'll all be in a position to have the conversation.
Good point. Good point.
I've looked at it and I know my decision, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's some time that we really have to start protecting what's left of our environment.
I'll work on a memo or something to support so you guys can see that prior to, and then we can add to, and then I'll get it right out after our meeting to Alex and everything.
Okay.
All right. So we'll be proactive.
There, there's one other point that has been brought up by the committee is, and that is, you know, as Gretchen said, even if it's adopted by the DEC or by the state, there's no specific requirements that come with it. However, the committee has indicated that we would like to change some of the wording in the Wetlands of Water Course Law to say that if this is adopted as a CEA, that in a CEA, wetlands that are within a certain amount, I'm saying maybe 300 feet of each other are now joined. So that even though that the state doesn't make any stipulations in the CEA, I think we are discussing whether we should change the wording a little bit in our wetlands law to include CEAs as joining close wetlands together. I know that came up, so.
Peter, Peter, hi, it's Alex again. So we've, we've actually taken your lead on this because I know we've heard you talk about this a number of times. We have drafted what that, something that we thought that might look like. Is that something that you guys would like to see circulated amongst your group?
Oh, definitely. Sure. If you can send that to Melissa, she can get us, to us before we discuss it. That would be great.
Great. We'll send it. Yeah.
I can mention that I've got the 100-foot buffers already on the maps that I've got. And I did 150 foot just to see what it would look like. So we would be able to see, things overlap already, particularly if you're 150 feet. But we'd be able to get almost by eyeballing it, a pretty good idea of how extensive that it might be.
Great, great. Okay.
Laura had her hand up. Sorry. I just saw it. Laura?
Yeah, I had, I had three, three questions. One is, I heard you say, Peter, about when you have wetlands 300 feet together. I know I was at the WEC meeting the other night and we were just discussing, is it 500 feet, 300 feet, how many feet, 250 feet? So Peter, the, the number you endorse then, because I would need to check, I, I helped with the draft that Alex is going to send you, and I just want to make sure it has the right number of feet in it. And so Peter, I heard you say 300. Is that the number you would like?
Well, I'm taking it from existing wetlands laws. And the federal wetland law does have a connectivity and they have 500 feet. I think that's too much. I, I, we'll see when Judy puts up her maps, but if you join everything within 500 feet, it might, it might inhibit landowners' ability to, to develop to some extent their property. So I...
Here's the area, just to show you, here's the area. And this is with 100-foot buffers that are our current law turned on. If I turn on 150, I mean, just to come in close here, you can see that there are areas like this one. Even if I turn that 150 off, they really overlap a lot. And that's existing town law within the area that we're looking at here. Here's the, here's the, the Kingston reservoirs. And this is the Sawkill.
So we basically have two situations. We have whether we can get the CEA approved by the state. And in that case, there's no further restrictions. And then it's up to the town board if they are willing to change the wording in the Wetlands of Water Course Law. So they're really two different things. And I'm, I'm hoping the committee will present both options or all the options to the town board.
Okay. So I had two other questions. One is, I heard Gretchen refer to legislation and I heard you say the word legislation. I was making notes of what you said and then you kind of moved on. So I just wanted to ask Gretchen, what was it you said about legislation?
I don't actually remember using that word, but maybe I did. So I can't think how I might have used it.
That's okay. I know everybody's mentioned this is guidance, it's not law, it's not binding this guidance. So maybe that was that. And then the other thing is, and I think this will answer my other question, is what is the impact to the current owners? I know we're saying that this is going to be guidance not binding, but if an owner wanted to do something, they could be told no, I guess. I mean, because the planning board, they have to come to the planning board for certain things. And the planning board might say no based on this, or with the planning board never saying no because it's guidance not binding.
I think we would be looking at a, at an EIS and that would determine it.
Right.
Or like mitigation, right?
Right.
See, that's core forest right there, just to give you one example. What I just turned on is, is forest core.
So, so I think, this is Gretchen speaking. It's true that the, the CEA actually carries no formal restrictions at all. And the only requirement that it carries is that the planning board or the town board or any other public agency that's reviewing something or approving something within, that, that, that might affect the special characteristics of this CEA, they have to explain their review and, and decision in writing. That is the single requirement that comes with this CEA. And there's nothing about the CEA that, that would, you know, automatically require that an EIS be prepared, but that would be a, that would be up to the planning board. What, what the planning board does with this is entirely up to the planning board. The CEA brings no, you know, it, 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 it brings no, you know, special requirements of the planning board, except that that requirement for a written explanation of their decisions and, and how their decisions will affect the special characteristics of the CEA that are outlined in the justification document.
But what I just turned on shows, that blue shows that this is a very high-quality forest and contiguous forest in addition to all the wetlands. It's really prime country. And we tend to think about prime country being up in the mountains, but the overlay, the scenic overlay does a certain amount of protecting of that already. Some. There's nothing protecting the lowlands. We don't have clear-cut rules in the lowlands.
Okay. Anybody else have questions from the board, or the board members have questions for Gretchen or any other members of this committee?
No. Thank you for excellent presentation.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Gretchen, and for the team behind you that put this together. Okay. We now are going to go to the planning board discussion and determination of proceeding with recessed public hearing for the DeSwan Aaron's case, which is SUP 21-0661. This case, and we, the December 16th, we've dedicated a workshop to dealing with the issues in the scenic overlay. Because it seems to be a matter of interpreting the code and how to deal with it. So in this particular case, we had an applicant came before the planning board in a scenic overlay. There had been some complaints from residents, citizens, that there had been clear cutting in this area. So the ZEO, building inspector, went to the site and made a determination that there was no clear cutting. The planning board went to the site and did a site visit and determined there was no clear cutting. There was, however, trimming of trees. It's not in the code that you can't trim trees. Not a great idea, but it's, I don't see in the code where it's against the law. The point being is, it's done. When the planning board got there, that was the situation. So we've had members of the town and of, of various committees saying, well, what can we have these people do to, to make up for this issue that they top some trees? Well, the problem is we have before several other cases in the scenic overlay where the site has been completely cleared. There was clear cutting. It is cleared. And we have one site where people have gone to see, which is the one at Ray Cliff, and we have one at Day Road. So the question is, those sites have been completely cleared. How do we apply, what do you do when it's already done? And you can't have somebody plant a 30-foot tree because we bent down that route. So you can't really physically possibly re, put all the trees back that are gone now. So that's why the December 16th meeting is going to be how we interpret the scenic overlay law. For instance, one of the things that says clear cutting, I mean, sorry, tree cutting to a minimum. Okay. Who is going to determine the minimum? It says it cannot be built on a prominent ledge. Okay. There are, these other two cases before us are on prominent ledges. So we're kind of looking to find a way to apply the scenic overlay code evenly across the board. And so that's the issue. So if anybody's got a question right now or about this, bring it up because, I mean, we will discuss it the 16th of December. bring it up because, uh, I mean, we will discuss it the sixteenth of December. But this is a planning board discussion about continuing with the public recessed public hearing for the DeSwan Aaron's. And, um, glad more members give me your opinion. I, I, like I said, there's no clear cutting. They probably shouldn't have trimmed those trees. But I don't see any code that says you can't trim the trees. Um, and it's done quite often in town, by the way, so this isn't the first time this has happened. So, um, as far as I believe that we should get them back before us and continue the public hearing. And, uh, I don't know if Melissa thinks we should wait till after the sixteenth to do it? Or continue the public hearing as soon as we can?
I think we should continue as soon as we can. Because the applicant did what we ask every applicant to do. We can't, we can't change what we've been doing all along now. That's my take.
As I said, when we reviewed the case, they did everything that the scenic overlay requires. They set the building back, they made it, uh, you know, they stone faced it so it's, you know, blends into the, they did everything they could.
Ultimately, this is, this is your decision as the planning board on what to do. Um, they met with us. You guys love the plans, it, it was inconspicuous with the stone buildings. I went and saw it was smaller than I thought it was, um, just to see it, like, they're not, it's not huge. Um, I, but it's your call as a planning board on what you want to do. I just need to know how you guys want to move forward. Judy, I see you.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I keep thinking about this, you're, Peter, you're talking about two other sites that are considerably worse in the way that they were handled. And we don't have enforcement authority. We don't have the ability, if there was something in the town law, and I don't think there is, to do more than say you have to mitigate. I don't know how the other two properties could mitigate. But in this case, one can argue that they have done at least some with the kind of building that they've done. And they could plant, and over time it will fill in. Um, we need stricter and clearer rules for the future, but we also have to have a way that if somebody buys a piece of property and does stuff to it before they ever come to us or even the building department, there are some consequences. And at the moment, it doesn't seem that there are.
I concur with Judy. And what is frustrating to me, and this is probably no surprise. I'm just, I'm sick of these impotent laws that we have or regulations. Because we have these circular, you know, conversations where we can't do anything. Everybody knows, I mean, there's trimming and there's topping. And topping is only done for one reason, in my opinion, and that's for views. And it's, I personally think that it should be prohibited. But what I think and, and what we can force are two different things. And then what Judy's right too, we're talking about, I mean, I wasn't up at the site visit and, and with this case, and everybody said it was compliant. But then you look at the pictures and you see what's going on and, and you see the damage. And I, you know, just, I wonder how the forest managed themselves before humans, uh, started doing it. And the answer is, held a lot better than humans. And so they have this issue. And then we have the issue where somebody just goes in, as Judy points out, and just cuts. And then asks forgiven, forgiveness, or they know that nobody's going to litigate. So we need to do something different, but I, you know.
It's an issue which we'll, we'll get into when we, when we bring it up at the, at the, uh, workshop meeting. But I can tell you, as a surveyor, uh, we have been sent up to not this site on Ray Cliff, but another site nearby on Ray Cliff, where a landowner cut the trees along the ledge to prepare for a nice site to build a house before they came to the planning board, of course. And the neighbor saw it and turned him in. And we had to go up as surveyors and locate all the stumps that were left when they cut. And you know, and so sometime down the road, that case is going to come before us. Somebody wants, gonna want to build there, and it's going to be nice and clear. And, uh, and that's, you know, that's what we're up against, and I, you know, it's a big problem if we're going to protect the scenic overlay.
So what do we do about it?
I, I don't have the answer because as Judy pointed out, it's, we don't have any, the planning board has no, you know, enforcement capabilities whatsoever. So what's done is done.
Can you guys hear me?
Go ahead Connor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, me and Laura are working on this in the zoning revision committee. And this is kind of, you know, the, the, the weak link, I suppose, in terms of ti- you know, tackling the issue. However, one of the things we're discussing is bringing the, um, fines and the, uh, up to, you know, current levels. They haven't been raised, I think, since eighty-nine or something like that. So even just accounting for inflation would, uh, make a substantial difference. But, uh, you know, it might, I, I, I think, I, 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 all I can say is I agree. And if we can find a way to get in front of it, that, or at least make it less, uh, attractive. I mean, like, you know, what the conversation we've had before is, you know, for too many people, it's really just the price of admission. And it's not a barrier to entry.
Stuart?
We talked about the same thing with dumping, you know, we have the same issue with dumping. You can't do anything about.
Stuart has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. I, I think, um, there's a weakness in the present law that you pointed out, that the law says one of the standards of this, of the scenic overlay is that tree cutting, uh, is supposed to be minimized. But that, of course, is, uh, you know, one person may think that, you know, X amount of cutting is minimal. And another person may think that, why? There's just really no standard in there, and that's a weakness in the code as it presently exists. And so, uh, you have an owner here who took it upon themselves to thin out some of the areas, you know, the top areas of, of the trees. And, um, uh, without it being plainly illegal. I mean, if you look at the code, how's a judge going to say, well, what's minimizing and what's not, you know? And what did they, is what they did minimal or not? You know, I don't know. And so it seems to me, if that's the state of this particular law, I don't know how it's really enforceable. And even the building department went out there and looked at it and found no violation. And yet, um, members of the community have come in and proclaimed to the planning board that, well, what are we going to do about these violations? But there are no violations. No one has ever issued a violation for this condition on this particular parcel. And so it seems to me that what they have done is arguably not illegal, as you've said, and therefore it's legal. And how can we as a planning board, after the fact, punish an owner for doing something that is legal, that they're within their rights to do? So, you know, that, I have a concern about that. And I think that this is a, this particular case where we did the site is that Peter and I is, um, is quite different and distinguishable from the other two parcels where there was plainly clear cutting. Now, I don't know why there weren't violations issued. Uh, we don't issue violations, but for those two other areas that Peter mentioned where there's plainly, you know, parcel was cleared out of trees, and denuded as it were, then, then, um, uh, it's up to the building department to cite them and to enforce. Um, so, but I don't think it's fair to these owners to lump them in, lump the, the DeSwan and Aaron's, I'm getting the names right, in with those other two cases, because they're really quite different cases. Um, so, you know, to me, I think the town board has to look at how they might come up with a better standard. So that owners will know when they look at the scenic overlay standards, you know, what are we thinking of doing? And does it meet a clear standard that's set forth that can be understood? Because right now, the standard is, is pretty vague. So, but that, that, that's just my observation right now. I agree it has to be discussed. And, um, but ultimately, I think the town board has to tighten up the code to be more clear as to what the standard is intended to be, rather than leaving it vague and then hitting it after the fact.
Yeah.
Sure, I see, I see three people with their hands up, but I'm not sure if we're, this is a planning board discussion, so I'm not sure if we're opening up, up to the public. So that's at your discretion.
There's, by the way, Stuart, there's, there's two descriptions of clear cutting. One is by the state, which says any, an acre or more clear cut on a certain slope is against the law. And our code says within the building site, if fifty percent of the trees six inches or over are cut, that's wrong. But now, it doesn't say the lot, it says the site. And it's fifty percent of trees over six inches or more. I don't know how you'd ever nail that down, I really don't, but that, uh, that's the issue. So I agree with Stuart. Um, did Judy have your hand up? I saw her.
Well, I, I only wanted to say, I heard, I think Laura said something about it, things being cut like right across, like there's a stud lift. And I think it is possible for the town board to make a distinction between thinning that leaves the mains, the main structure of the tree intact and cutting the top off. Topping is a specific kind of thing.
Good point. Anybody else have anything? So basically, we've agreed, uh, uh, Melissa, to bring them back and continue the public hearing, correct?
If that's, yes, guys, you want to take a vote? We can take a vote. How about we take a vote?
All right, make a motion to, uh, uh, restore the public hearing to the calendar and to reopen it.
I'm moved.
All in favor? All right. Okay.
Thank you, planning board.
Okay, so now we just have one last, uh, two last things. We have a site visit update for a wetlands and water course permit for Anthony Nicolaux and Rebecca Chalklin. And that's the, um, the case that's going to come up before us. But, um, just so everybody's here now, and Stuart can have his own, but I wrote my site plan review. And I'm going to read it to you all now because, um, it's pertinent to what we're going through. The planning board made a site visit to the Nicolaux-Cocklin site located at one thirty-five Ryan Drive, S B L thirty-eight point seven dash five dash twenty-five on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The residents of the town of Woodstock passed a law some ten years ago that prohibited the development in wetlands, watercourses, and the associated buffers. We now have an applicant that proposes to develop in the wetlands, watercourses, and buffers. In fact, this application proposes to construct a long driveway and house completely within the wetland buffer. This development proposes to go through the wetlands, the buffers, and cross the stream several times as if there was no wetlands or water course law in town. It was observed by the planning board reps that the whole area of the proposed development is in a low valley through which a stream passes and is bordered by wetlands and their buffers. Clearly a site that was left undeveloped for good reason. However, if this was a lot of record in existing approved building law, then the planning board would have to try to find a way to protect the environment and facilitate the property owner's right to build. But since there's not a lot of record, then the first question the planning board would have to ask in answering the applying to the W, to the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course Protection Standards is can this proposed development in the wetland streams and buffers be avoided? And the answer is, yes, by not creating this new lot. The applicant proposes to mitigate the development in these wetlands by offering other lands to be protected. But the other lands are environmentally set up and already are protected under town code. So the planning board would then have to ask the applicant if there's any other site on their property that could be developed without disturbing the wetlands and streams. So that's just, uh, you know, what I saw of the site. And I realize this is becoming an issue both in the scenic overlay and with wetlands, is that yes, it's going to be harder to develop in this town if we protect the environment and abide by scenic overlay regulations or codes and wetland and water course codes. Yes, there's going to be a point where you have to say no to some developments. So that's my opinion. And if it comes, when it comes before the board, as all these cases, well, it's a seven-person board and everybody gets a vote. So it's wherever the vote comes out, that's your answer. But, uh, I, I just wanted to point out that we are getting a lot of applications to go through wetlands and buffers and buildings in the scenic overlay in, in, uh, in, uh, you know, obvious places.
On wedges.
So.
Is this, is this the property, Peter?
Uh, yeah, it's off of, uh, Ryan Drive. Ryan Drive, yes. Yeah, you see, the issue is, this is not, they call it a lot line revision, but this is really creating a new lot in Woodstock. What it is, is there's a little tiny lot in, in Hurley um, at the end of the road there, at, at the end of that road.
Over here, yeah.
Right, down below, right below your hand was a second ago, it was a little tiny lot. Yeah, yeah, down a little bit more, little, right there, that tiny lot. So the, the owners of the big lot bought that lot. And now they want to use that lot and part of their lot to create a new lot. So, you know, if they wanted, if they could develop the lot that's in Hurley without crossing into the Woodstock site, then go ahead, they can do that completely in the town Hurley. But what they're asking to do is create a new lot. And it's an unbuildable lot according to our codes. And so, and I agree that the building department says we need to mitigate, mitigate to make homeowners that have a lot of record be able to access it and, and, and develop it. But this is not a lot of record. And that's the point I want to bring out. So.
I just turned on the town boundary.
Yeah. So, I mean, Stuart was there on the site too, in his nice shoes, had to walk through the stream and the mud and the goop. He knows what a wetland looks like.
And feels like, my feet are still wet. But, you know, I wasn't properly dressed, but that was mine, that's on me. But I was, I was impressed by the extent of wetness there. It was very boggy and almost swampy to my, to my view. And where they want to put a driveway over a, a very long stream, they went across it. And I, you know, one of the concerns I had, and I'm not an engineer, but is whether the ground was strong enough and dry enough to support a, a crossing. Uh, and, and the representative, uh, said, you know, quite simply that, yeah, they put down a base layer. But, you know, what's going to come off the driveway and flow into the, into the wetlands? You know, from vehicle use and, and so on. And, and this is not just like an isolated stream, there's, there's wetness all over the, all over the parcel. So, um, you know, it's concerning to me. And, and, uh, that's pretty much all I have to say. Not feeling good about this one.
All right, we have a sober moment coming up. But before that, is there anything else, any members of the board um, want to add before we go to the next step? If not, um, we are requesting a moment of silence for Jerry George Washington and all his years of service to the town. So if we just take a minute and think about that. Okay, everybody, um, I'll entertain a, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Stay well, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, planning board.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, planning board.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, John Boy. It's like the Waltons.
Think of the next name. Brian. Brian.